Executive session to discuss two items. First, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss with respect to collective bargaining for all town unions, if an open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position and the chair so declares. And second, pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
Moved in second to go into executive session as read. Roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. We will return to open session no later than. Good evening. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for November 22nd, 2021 back to order. We started tonight's meeting in executive session where we discussed collective bargaining for all town unions and conducted contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Two decisions were made tonight. We reached an agreement with the memorandum of understanding with the HEA and a memorandum of understanding with the SEIU. If a few people from this side of the room move to that side of the room, we will all be six feet apart and we can, none of us can wear masks. Anyone in here that's uncomfortable can obviously wear their masks. And if you're uncomfortable with people around you not wearing your mask, I'll find a seat for you. With that, would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance? The pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Public comment and announcement? Moving on to the consent agenda.
I move that we vote to approve the consent agenda, which is to approve the Caleb Chase request in the amount of $1,000.
Moved in second in any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
New business, we're going to do an update from Brian Sheld on the Harwich Fund. Good evening, Brian.
Good evening.
If we didn't have a presentation on the screen tonight, but I thought you could go through or say what the Harwich Fund is and go through a few of the bullet points in your presentation.
Thank you very much. I actually brought some props back here for those in the room, a couple of posters. But for those who are not aware of us, in fact, I believe it was back in March was the last time I spoke to this group on a Zoom call, but it was fairly quick. The Harwich Fund is a permanent endowment. So it's part of the Cape Cod Foundation, and it's a permanent endowment set up to support the unmet needs of the Harwich community. It was really put together by several very concerned citizens. We've banded together and we've grown probably just the past 18 months. We launched a program called Harwich Helping Harwich back in May of 2020, focusing on the health and human services needs that were elevated during the pandemic. I'm happy to say that we granted $6,500 of grants. I should say that we grant to nonprofits. So our purpose is to support those organizations that are supporting of our Harwich community. So we granted about $6,500 in our first six months, and we'll have doubled that in 2021. So we've also grown from two donors at the start of May of 2020 to over 70. And a third of those donors are what we call community philanthropists, which are those that have either donated or pledged $5,000 or more. So there are people that are committed to the needs. Now, as I say, we're focused on health and human services. Some examples are the Children's Fund, which is a winter clothing drive that prior to our support, I want to, I believe they served about 70 families back in 2019. 2020, it was 140. We're supporting them again this year, and they're going to drive that to over 200. Recently, we did a grant for the Harwich Elementary School for a scholarship, if you will, for musical instruments for fourth graders, for families in need that would otherwise not have had an opportunity to use a musical instrument. Now, notice the focus is health and human services because that's where the greatest need has been. But we're looking to expand that. We're also looking to expand beyond youth. I should say also with Emily here in the room, we did a grant to the Council on Aging to do a 10-week course in resiliency for seniors. And we're continuing to have discussions to add more support to the Council on Aging. We're in conversation with a number of people throughout the town, and this is an excellent forum for us to speak to the board, as well as speak to the community and those that are watching. My ask is that you support what we do because we're supporting Harwich. We're trying to grow this endowment. And as I say, it's a permanent endowment with a mission to support back. So my ask is that you speak of our good deeds so that we can grow awareness. If you identify needs, let us know. I also have, I provided you handouts. There's also some handouts in the back for those who are in the room. But I ask if you want more information, my name is Brian Sheld. But if you go to harwichfund.org and sign up on our newsletter, look for more information about brochures. But as I say, my ask is that we all become change agents. We're all here about improving the quality of the community, grow beyond health and human services to other needs that are identified, and be a part of positive change. In fact, that's exactly what we're trying to do within the community. I don't know if anybody has any questions or if it made sense what I described.
Thank you, Brian. Can you just say out loud how people would get involved in helping the Harwich Fund? Beyond donations, but even with donations?
Well, with donations, please either reach out to me, and you can find my name, my email address and phone number on the website. There's also plenty of information there about past grants as well as pledge forums. So one way to do that is to do donations. I should have also mentioned that we did a joint fundraiser with the Guild of Harwich Artists. So we did that for Labor Day Saturday for the art sale in Don Park. And for the $480 that were raised, we directly tied that to a grant that we made to the Friends of the Harwich Early Childhood for a science and arts project that related back to the mission of the Guild of Harwich Artists. So there are many ways to get involved. One is donation, but help us expand the reach. Joint fundraising, joint awareness. And the more we raise awareness, the more we grow the endowment, the more we identify programs, the more it fulfills the need of helping back to the community.
Thank you, Brian. Board, questions and comments, starting with Julie?
I just said, first of all, it's fantastic. What a wonderful job, and we're so grateful to have wonderful people in the community like you and others willing to donate. I certainly want to spread the word. I'm wondering if you've considered doing something that Chatham does with their Angel Fund and doing an ornament, so just to help raise money, you know?
Those are great ideas. In fact, there's also a sister town fund in Chatham called the Chatham Fund. And there have been certain programs that we've actually joined with them because it was a Montemoys School effort where they have a percentage of students attending as well as we Harwich do. So we'll join forces. But I think that's a great idea. We're looking at ways that we can raise awareness.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work. Appreciate it.
Larry?
The same. Thank you very much for your efforts. Much appreciated.
Mary?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Dawn?
Just that you do great work, and thanks for having me.
Brian, thank you. Joe, do you have anything?
Nope, other than I think it's a fantastic organization. I'm going to take Brian's words to heart myself and look in the coffers.
Thank you. And can we get this on the town website?
Absolutely.
So we can create a link there?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And happy to come back periodically and report progress.
Come on. Thank you. Okay, annual committee meetings. We will start with the Harwich Cultural Council.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Bernadette Waystack. I'm the current Chair of the Harwich Cultural Council. I believe you have my report already in front of you. If there's any further questions or anything I can clarify for you, I'm happy to do so.
Thank you. Dawn?
No, it's just important that you keep doing the work you're doing because especially with the cultural district and what Harwich would like to be identified as, it's an extremely important committee.
Thanks, I agree.
Mary?
You wrote a great report, tons of info and very concise, and I thank you for that.
Well, and I have to confess that I had someone with some very big shoes to fill. Tina Gaines has done an enormously good job for us for the last six years until she term limited out and taught me everything I know.
You did a great job, Bernadette.
Thank you.
Thank you. Julie?
I just would reiterate the same thing. It was a great report, and Tina was a great, you know, asset, but so are you. So thank you so much.
Well, it remains to be seen, but thanks.
Larry?
No, I think we've seen enough. You'll do a great job. You've experienced a lot of areas.
Thank you.
And I do appreciate the comments on Tina. She did a lot of nice work, too, so.
She really did, and continues to in other areas.
My question or my comment is, is a little bit broader. A lot of these reports and town activities always talk about grant writing and grant review. And I think I've brought this up before. But my position is it'd be great for the town to consider hiring a part-time or maybe work with another town to hire a grant writer because right now we leave that to individual committees, individual department heads. And that's a tough take, and it's tough in two aspects. It's tough because a lot of these grants, you need someone watching when grants are available. And we oftentimes get grants, you know, we'll get it today and it has to be in by tomorrow. And then grant writing is a special skill, one I don't have. I may be going when it doesn't have it, but it's a, my sense is a special skill. So I'd like to, Michael and Joe, I'd like to bring that up on an agenda at a later point. We can discuss how we can centralize grant writing in both keeping track of grants and writing grants because it's an important activity. And I don't think it's always left, even though people work hard at it, it's a skill.
I agree. It's, there's actually an art to it. You have to know how to write, how to make the ask. And if I remember correctly, when, I've been here 35 years. At one point, we did have a member of town staff who took on grant writing. But it just, I think it was in adjunct to the job they were doing. But it does make a difference if you can consolidate it because there is money out there. Right now, for the arts with ARPA funds and Mass Cultural Council has a lot of different departments and a lot of different areas in which they do grants, not just the LLC that we are involved in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I think we have a grant writer. If the Board would take Selectman Anderson's committees, maybe we could assign that duty to Mary.
Mary would be delighted to do that.
Well, put that down.
However, those federal and state ones are way beyond my scope. They speak a foreign language.
All right. Next up is the Finance Committee.
Good evening. My name is John Chori. I'm Chair of the Finance Committee. And before I start my annual reporting, I would like to endorse Larry's suggestion on the grant writing. I think that's a definitely needed position within this town. It's something I've discussed before with people, and clearly I think that's a good need. We're very fortunate, I do want to mention, we are very fortunate to have many department heads that are excellent at writing grants. You know, Chief LeBlanc, Chief Goddard, Link, I mean, the Waterways Commission, they've brought in millions of dollars. So we do have some good staff people, but to Larry's point, it does take a special skill set to chase off the smaller ones.
I'll assume the Finance Committee will endorse that.
I do, for sure, 100%. I've discussed it with some members personally, so 100%. Again, my name's John Chori. I'm with the Finance Committee, the annual report. And for the benefit of the folks at home, I'd just like to read the, you've got, the Board has my report in front of them. But I'd just like to read the first paragraph for the folks at home. "In the town of Harwich, it is the Finance Committee's responsibility to receive, review, analyze, and make recommendations to the citizens at Harwich at the annual town meeting on budgets or in articles received from the Selectman and Town Administrator." And I do want to emphasize that piece. The Finance Committee in this town do not build the budgets. It's the job of the Town Administrator and the Selectman. In some other towns, it's reverse, but in this town, it's the job of the Selectman and the Town Administrator to build the budget and present the budget. The various budgets consist of operating budgets, the schools, both the Montemoys Regional School and the Technical School, wastewater, both waste and wastewater budget, and all the warrant articles, both monetary and non-monetary articles we're asked to make a recommendation on. During the budget cycle, the Finance Committee holds public meetings and public hearings on various budgets and warrant articles. The Finance Committee may at times invite department heads and warrant article holders in for future explanation of their budgets and warrant article requests. And the rest in the report is, all the members are clearly marked right there. Dale Kennedy is the clerk, Brian Wheeler is vice chair, and I am the chair. All members are sworn in and have completed ethics training. The Finance Committee at this time does not require review or updating currently. Members' attendance at meetings have been good. We have not canceled any meetings due to a lack of quorum. We do have one opening right now, and I am working with the town moderator on this opening. All meeting agendas with backup materials have been posted, and we are currently up to date and posting of the meetings. If there's any questions on that, I'll go into my three to five-minute discussion period I was allowed on topics.
Any discussion where we're at now? Dawn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to verify something because the charter Russell calls for a certain number of meetings to be attended by the moderator. Has that been happening?
You're putting me on the spot there, Mr. Howell.
Because you brought it up.
He has not been attending regular meetings of the Finance Committee. I think by charter, he's required to attend three meetings in the course of a year. That's something that probably could be worked on. That's it.
Any further questions, Mary?
I talked to John earlier today because I really liked a couple of pages in the packet on the uncollected property taxes. And I spent a little time with Carol this afternoon, and she's going to look into getting those reports generated. She said she would request that. It would give us a monthly look at each one of those numbers so you could see if, are we going up? Are we going down? Where are we going? So Carol said she would look into that.
I did want to cover that after this segment here, Mary, but thank you. Yes.
Larry, anything on?
Nothing more.
Julie?
No, I don't have any.
Go ahead, Joe.
On my three to five minutes of discussion, there's three topics I'd like to highlight. One is the uncollected property taxes Mary mentioned, approved but unspent warrant articles, and then a planned use on the continued use of the Cultural Center. And I realize that this meeting is not the time to discuss these three topics in any detail whatsoever, but I do want to bring it to the Board's attention. I also realize that there is currently good progress being made in uncollected property taxes. I don't want to minimize anything that's currently being done. And also, there's good progress being on, made on approved but unspent warrant articles. On the third one is the planned use of the continued use of the Cultural Center. I'm not sure where we are, but I know we're supposed to be in a five-year plan on the Cultural Center. We're either in three or four year of that cultural plan. And I have not seen one, nor have the Finance Committee have seen one. We have talked about this in our Finance Committee meetings, is that we would like to see a plan for this building with clear goals and objectives of what we're trying to accomplish within the five-year period that you've asked for or has been granted for this building. It's important this year because in the capital plan, the one that was approved at town meeting in May, that may change coming up, but the one that I'm basing this statement on is the one that was approved in May, there's currently in this year's fiscal '23 budget a request for the Cultural Center of $230,000 for a generator and for boilers. And then in the years, fiscal years 2025, there's a request for $200,000 for windows. And in '26, there's another $200,000 for windows. And that's just basic stuff for a building. It's not looking at a roof that could possibly go. Roofs are very expensive, we know. Sprinkler systems that may break during the winter. There's an auditorium and a cafeteria there with a dividing wall that has never been opened yet. Dividing walls like that are very expensive. There's also a dividing wall in the gymnasium. So I'd just like to see if we could put together some type of plan and with clear objectives, with goals and objectives. And to do that, I put in the report some Excel spreadsheets that Mary alluded to earlier on monthly statuses of where we are with property taxes and the approved but unspent warrants. And I want to thank Karen Dussette, a recent member of the committee who helped me on the Excel. She didn't help me. She did them all, and I did sweep them. But so that's what I'd like to do. And an important piece in the uncollected property taxes to remind folks in the audience purposely, a few years back, we did publish Delinquent Taxpayers in The Chronicle. And that brought in a tremendous amount of money to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars. I don't know what the exact number is, maybe Joe does. But it was, I think, $300,000 or $400,000 that just came in unsolicited other than seeing people, neighbors seeing their names in the paper. I know that may be a little ultraconian in nature, but it's done a lot of places. And I have no problems publishing names at all. I pay my taxes like 90% of the town probably, 95%, I don't know the percentages. So I just want to rethink that. And that's in the worksheet there also. And then once we get these worksheets finalized, I'd like to post them either on the Finance Town's website page or somewhere within the town website themselves. So happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, John. Questions? Larry?
I like your discussion points and what you're talking about, the plan. My only comment on the spreadsheet, monthly data, I'd like feedback on how labor-intensive that is. It could be that quarterly reports would be as useful. And it would be a little less labor-intensive that would get us to the same point.
Yep, sure. The spreadsheet was just meant to, you know, how we all, we like to see something in front of us, and then we all have suggestions and ideas. And it was just, that's what that was for, to get them published and out there.
Julie?
No, I don't have anything for other.
Mary?
To Larry's point, I had that same conversation with Carol. And if she can get whatever the database that she has, a report created, you can pull it every day if you want. So there would be, if she can get that, there'd be no problem with monthly.
Yeah, thank you. Second, a secondary point on that is sometimes you can bury this with details as information as well. So it may still be better to look at it quarterly just so we can give it, you know, correct review rather than get buried.
Dawn? So I would assume you'll send that to, well, the Town Administrator has it. But I would ask that the Town Administrator review your request, talk to staff, and to figure out a schedule that works for staff and Joe with all of their other duties. Joe?
Thank you. If I could just address one of the topics. Excuse me, because I think you've heard appropriate discussion or updates on the uncollected property taxes, Mr. Chairman. You know, we're going to speak more directly on this later in the meeting. The approved but unspent warrant articles, that is something that Carol tracks. We know, I want to say that it's roughly about 19 million. However, 14 to 16 million of that is wastewater, and we know that that will be spent. And that we do that exercise, we being Administration and Finance, annually. To the Cultural Center, I think to be accurate, the Cultural Center reuse is in its, either the third of five years if you account for the two-year extension, or if you add it all together, it's in the fifth of the seven years. Regardless, there was quite a bit of discussion about the Cultural Center, the last go-around on the capital plan. So I've already told, capital outlet of which John's a member, that we're going to be talking about that more directly. And then coming back to the Board of Selectmen. So that discussion's already going to happen because of the capital needs that have been addressed in prior years.
Thank you. And John knows. John and I have had these conversations numerous times on everything that you brought up, that stuff that the Board is actively working on.
Yes, I realize that.
In the last four months, each of them, with the exception of the Cultural Center, at least three times. The Cultural Center, as you and I have talked years ago when they put the RFP out, we had one offer on the building. It was $650,000 for, I'm not sure how many square feet, but a lot, in seven acres. And the town at that point, by majority, decided to use the building. To your point on the capital, we do have a revolving fund with $300,000 sitting in it that when we talk about budgets this year, we'll talk about paying for those capital items. I have asked the Town Administrator and then given him some time, based on the capital that he just spoke of, that we wanted to do a deep dive into the Cultural Center to see where we were at, what the revenue was, and what other spaces we can use. John, I don't have to tell you, there's at least five properties on the agenda tonight that we've been driving trying to move. And that is not the colossal giant that the Cultural Center last middle school is. And one of these properties dates back to closing 30 years ago. So the history of this town is not moving very fast on vacant buildings. And I personally fear making the middle school vacant if we can bring something in and the residents are using it. Certainly, there's room for improvement, and you will have those numbers sooner than later.
No, I agree. I use the Cultural Center myself. You know, I'm a beneficiary of the use of that building. I think it's a great building. And it's just, you know, are the rents adequate with what the expenses are? I think it's a whole discussion, but thank you very much.
And we will bring that back soon. Thank you. Anything else from the Board on those? I'll say. Presentation of the current financial assessment of the town in preparation for the 2022 Annual Town Meeting. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I don't think I said my usual good evening, everybody, and to the audience assembled, to those watching on stream or at home. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and it's a nice dovetail to some of the points that were just raised by the Finance Committee Chair. But what I'd like to do is highlight in the memorandum that you hopefully have in front of you, two recommended actions that you can then use on your next agenda topic to give me directive on the fiscal year 2022 budget, specifically to start for the operating budgets. So as you'll see in the memorandum, I talk about the fact that, first of all, the charter requires me to update you on estimated revenues and where we're at. And you'll see that the town is currently on track for our revenue assumptions that we made in support of fiscal year '22 budget, whereas we're almost halfway through the year, and we're trending towards 50% of the revenue coming in. We saw a nice uptick in the first quarter of over 29%. However, the overall message is we are on track with regard to estimated revenues. And then as far as what I think we should come out of, the discussion coming up next, is if you look in the memorandum that I've written, there are two underlying sections, and I can go back to the data that sort of impacts on them. But I would recommend that the Board direct that salaries and wages be established during the budget process session at present base levels. And that is because, as you know, the Board through Administration and Management is presently in negotiations with all eight collective bargaining associations and all eight collective bargaining agreements. And so we are hopeful that those can conclude with actions to be taken by town meeting. But to make any statement as to what level that should be right now would hurt the town's ability to negotiate. So my recommendation is that we keep them at base levels. And the reason why I say base levels is that there are five associations that the Board is aware of, one of which you announced earlier, Mr. Chairman, that are under agreement, excuse me, four that are under agreement, three that have begun the negotiations for their next contracts, and one that has yet to be negotiated with the town, but they reached out to us, and we're going to be discussing with them in December. So at this point, it makes sense to leave salary and wages at the current base level because of those negotiation efforts. And again, as I've written, those negotiation efforts are then expected to impact upon the ninth group, which is personnel by law employees. And then when it comes to the recommendations on expenses for the operating budgets, I would recommend that the departmental operating expenses be level funded as an effort of this budgeting process. And that's quite simply because we don't know where negotiations will take us as far as the salary impacts, if any, and then also some of the anticipated headwinds that Carol and I are aware of and others that we expect to come down the pike. And so those are debts from prior years that are now coming to fruition, specifically for fiscal year '23. It relates to Phase II of the CWMP, which impacts upon East Harwich. We don't know yet where the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group is coming on health insurance rates. We do expect an increase. I will tell you that Carol has recommended a conservative approach, and I wholeheartedly agree with that, meaning we're anticipating a 6% increase in health insurance rates, and we hope that they don't exceed that. But again, we don't know at present time. As we talk about public education later on tonight, I know As we talk about public education later on tonight, I know the Board will be taking up two items related to the Montemoy Agreement. The preliminary discussions that Carol and I have had with the Cape Cod Regional Vocational Technical School is a good news, bad news. The good news is that beautiful new building is attracting more Harwich students going there, which means bad news for me, because that means the assessment for Cape Tech is going up. And as you know, in years past, where there's been a decrease, it's felt like a savings. So now we're met with the comparison of prior years, no increase, to now an increase, and it's going to feel worse than it is in reality. However, you know, for me personally, that's a good statement for our community, because we have more of our residents going, taking advantage of the great programs there. And then external impacts, and that's really just me saying, who knows what tomorrow brings, as the song goes. We know that the nation, national economy and local economy is facing inflation rates that we haven't seen in 30 years, and we know that locally and nationally, that there are very tight labor markets. What we don't know yet is how those are going to impact in the future months as we prepare the budget. And so for those reasons, Mr. Chairman and members, as you progress to the next topic, I think it's prudent to develop a policy statement on those two parameters. Level fund on base salaries as we negotiate, and a level fund on expenses until we get a better sense of where salaries are coming from.
Thank you, Joe. Don?
Nothing right now.
Mary?
That sounds wise to me.
Julie? No, I don't have any.
Larry?
Yeah, no, I'm in agreement. I probably should know this, but when we talk about the school enrollment, you know, and our proportion, as that relates to our proportion that we pay, is based on the foundation numbers, which includes school choice, kids going out, we still pay for that as a percent, I think. Does Cape Tech fall into that same category?
So I would say, yes, they fall into the same category as far as school choice, but as you'll discuss later on, I think there's a significant difference where the Montemoy language is looking to change. I don't know if that language that we're going to is what's in Cape Tech's agreement right now.
Because that would lead us to, that would lead me to think we pay twice then, you know? We pay as foundation budget, and we pay also when they go to Cape Tech.
Yeah, I'd have to validate that more, and I can talk.
It'd be nice to know that, because that's the interesting discussion. But I'm in agreement.
Okay, thank you. On to D, discussion and possible vote of the development of a general policy statement to guide the town administrator in developing the budget requests for fiscal 2023. I'll take a stab at that and bring it back next week for a vote of the Board, or is that how you want it to go, Joe?
Whatever the Board wants to do, you had to rely upon my memo, so I wanted to give you the opportunity to discuss it tonight. Or if the Board decides to go that route, there's certainly no issue. I am presenting to Department Heads tomorrow, and what I can tell them in the short term is what I'm recommending to the Board.
I'm fine with what you recommended. So if we want to vote that as a policy statement, and you're comfortable with that, then take a motion from the Board.
I will be accept his recommendation as our policy.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We don't have to bring it back.
Thank you.
All right, discussion and possible vote to support the proposed amendments to Section Seven and Section Nine of the Montemoy Regional School District Agreement. We talked about this last week and decided to separate this out. This is the financial piece on the elementary school and the changing in formula. Any discussion from the Board? Mary?
I'm all set. I'm ready for a vote.
Don?
I've said what I've said. This is like the beginning, but it's certainly not the solution.
Right. Julie?
No, I don't have any comments.
Larry?
Well, I think we all agree with what Don said. This is the beginning, and we need to, a long-term solution, we need to be sure we start on right away. But I'm in favor of this.
And the reason to get this done now is to get it on this year's.
So we get something going, exactly. That's why we're all moving in this direction.
And thank you, Mary, for the hard work.
Thank you, Don.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Is the motion to support it or to put it on the warrant article?
To support and include it in the warrant.
I move that we vote to support the proposed amendments to Section Seven and Nine of the Montemoy Regional School District Agreement, and to put them in the spring warrant.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Anyone in the public?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead, Joe.
If the Board goes forward with that motion, there's certainly no argument or objection to it. Just a reminder that there are other changes that are being contemplated to the agreement. So just a reminder through the Board to the general public that you are looking at a January 4th, 2022, public hearing on that discussion, so the Board can say that they offered to the public a chance to discuss all of the changes. So I just want to put that reminder out there as well.
Dr. Carpenter will begin to go over each change. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To that end, the more I read it, the more questions I do have, other than these two areas.
Mary, any further discussion?
Nope.
Julie? Larry? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do you want a motion on F?
Yes.
I move that we vote to approve the proposed draft proclamation for the eighth-grade Blue Team D Block Civics Class Project Citizen with Rob Mador of Bridges for the Fallen.
Second. Moved in second, and this was for us to approve the proclamation. Next week, we will invite the teacher and the students and Rob Mador in to present that to me.
Whether they show up or not, I'm not sure, but we will be inviting them.
Joe?
And just to be clear, what we're talking about was the class of 2024's Grade Eight, who are now our sophomores, in case anyone thinks we're talking about this year's eighth graders.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Just that Chief LeBlanc did a great job writing that proclamation up. It's really very nicely done.
Agreed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mary, I'd take a motion on G.
On G.
And then we'll get into discussion.
I move that we vote to approve the private plow rate change as recommended by the town administrator.
Moved in seconded. Discussion from the Board?
No, it's well documented. I see links here, but I have, you know, we have to pay competitive rates, and we know price and cost are going up, so.
Julie?
Yeah, the same thing. I mean, there's really no way around it.
Mary?
I was happy that he got us near the average. We're not the high guy in town, but we'll no longer be the low guy.
And we have the best roads. Don?
And the best plowing, so I want to keep it that way.
Link, any quick statement or plea to the public to apply for the job?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Lynn Cooper, DPW Director. When you get to yes, you stop talking. Thank you for your consideration. I'd just like to really briefly say that we have near, we have about 200 miles of public and private roads, and it would be impossible for staff alone to clear those roads in anything acceptable as a timeframe. We rely heavily on these private contractors. Thank you for your consideration.
And Link, where's the advertisement go for this? Are you advertising for this, or is it just known? Do you contact last year's plot drivers?
Yes, yes. So this was brought about with my staff polling to see who wanted to come back. Presently, we've lost about five. It doesn't appear insurmountable. We've had two people walk in. And the prevailing question we've been receiving is, are you going to adjust these rates?
Okay. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is as good a time as any, because the whole subject's in front of the town right now. Just to remind everybody, and I know you know this, because every year you get questions about this, everybody's mailbox and pretty much everybody's, a portion of everybody's front lawn is in part of the right way. And they always get upset, except they want their streets plowed too, especially in cul-de-sacs. It's a devilish prospect to plow them properly. Just give the plowers a break. We have a really rough time, as it is, making sure that all our roads are done, and we do a pretty good job of it, you know, through the years. But there's so many people that have done things like put brick plazas up where their postbox goes, without recognizing that it's not on their property.
Thank you, Don. Joe?
Just to tie it all together, Mr. Chairman, the last bullet point of my memo about the budget, this is a great example of that, meaning costs are going up, labor market in this is very tight and very competitive. And I think the DPW Director is spot on. The town needs to remain competitive to make sure that our roads remain safe, and we have to pay more to do that.
Thank you, Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five-zero, Joe?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Do you want a motion on H?
I'd take a motion on H. Before we go to that motion, Joe, it says pending building department approval. We don't need a building department approval for this, I don't think.
So staff was, wasn't certain about that, but I can let them know that.
So we'll take the motion without the pending building department approval.
I move that we vote to approve the event application for Christmas in Harwich, December 3rd, 4th, and 5th, 2021.
Second. Okay, moved in seconded. Now this time, I won't start with the Board, we'll start with Cindy Williams. Tell us about your event.
Link said, when you get everyone to say yes, you just say yes. That didn't work here, huh?
He's been around longer than you.
Yes, sir. Okay, so we're happy to bring back after COVID, the annual Harwich Chamber of Commerce Presents Christmas in Harwich Weekend. It will be a week from this coming Friday night, December 3rd. It starts with the annual tree lighting and caroling. The amazing Harwich Elementary School Choir will be doing the performing. And they have a new teacher and director who is the Energizer Bunny, and has got a great routine or performance schedule for us, as well as two of our churches will be participating as well, the Pilgrim Congregational Church and the First Congregational Church from Harwich Center. So we're excited to have all that happening. Once again, we do this in conjunction with the Pilgrim Masonic Lodge, who is one of our three sponsors for the tree lighting. Winsong Antiques and Bud's Go-Karts as well are our three sponsors this year. One of the reasons we're here is because we have added a brass regency band on the porch of William Rave, so it would be outside music. So when people are strolling around, they're going to hear festive holiday music being done, as well as our town band will be inside of TD Bank. And then the annual cookie walk is now going to be a cookie sale by the Pilgrim Congregational Church. And where they have a commercialized kitchen, they are able to do this. Part of what I had to do this year was put out a packet to all of our members and businesses that are participating for food permits, et cetera. And this one is all granted thanks to Jen and Katie in the Health Department. And lastly, we have the satellite location of the homeless for the holidays in the parking lot, which will be next to Santa, who will be arriving by fire truck, thanks to our wonderful fire department. And what we're asking is that children bring a donation to this satellite location, and then go over and visit with Santa and tell them their wish list for the year. Some of the things that I've included in your packet, which the public also is seeing, will get posted once I have your approval on the weekend's events. We will be posting this on social media and will be fully on our website. I wanted to wait until I was in front of all of you to make sure we were all in agreement with everything here. So other than what we just touched on on Friday night, Saturday is the Harwich Garden Club Annual Boutique at the Community Center. The First Congregational Church will have the Free Advent Christmas Concert. And the hottest ticket in town, from what I've told, and it was like Ticketmaster when they went on sale, is Trolley to Christmastown, an event that we do at the Chamber in conjunction with our sponsors, the Family Pantry and Cape Destinations, who supplies our trolleys. And we're doing it at the Turn-In this year. That is on Saturday and Sunday. There are limited tickets available. You can buy on our website or by calling me. And then Sunday, a new addition is the Cape Cod Lighthouse Charter School is doing a Civil War exhibit from 12 to 2:00. And then finally, or one of the final finals is, also in the packet is Seven Trees for Seven Villages. Again, trying to incorporate that we are the Harwich Chamber, so we take care of all seven villages of Harwich. So East Harwich will have a live tree, which I go out and decorate. And Harwich Centers, East Harwiches will be at Hinckley's Home Center. Harwich Center will be at the Pilgrim Masonic Lodge. Harwich Ports will be on the porch of the Harwich Chamber. North Harwich is at the transfer station. Pleasant Lake will be at Cape Cod Tech. South Harwich is at Newbury Street South, and West Harwich is at Chase Library. The final announcement is that we are continuing Festival of Trees, the fundraiser for the Family Pantry. This year, we have 30 trees that are being decorated and donated to be auctioned or raffled, and all proceeds go to the Family Pantry. These trees will be located at my building, 400 East, and at various businesses that are donating these to drive customers in to see the trees, bid on them, and then, of course, raise this wonderful money for the Family Pantry. So that's a weekend in a nutshell.
Thank you, Cindy. Comments, questions from the Board? Don?
What are you doing with the rest of your spare time?
I'm told I sleep between 2:00 and 3:00 a.m., but I don't believe it.
Mary?
Just thank you, Cindy. That's fabulous.
Larry?
Great job. I especially enjoy the kids singing in the Christmas tree lighting.
The teacher that I met this year, she's new, and she's into theater and everything. We're actually moving the children this year, opposed to being down close to the post office. They're going to be closer to the tree, and she's got something special for us. So I'm super excited about this one, too.
Julie?
So I, after everything you just said, I just, I think you're the Energizer Bunny. So thank you, guys, that you do such a great job for the town and the Chamber and all of it. So I really appreciate that. And I also appreciate you coming to us, because we've had such a contentious year, year and a half, with outdoor music and all that. So I appreciate you, you know, asking for the official word. And just one question on that.
Sure.
You mentioned the outdoor music and the food and all. No, is all that covered by?
So what I presented to you tonight on that one sheet is what the Chamber does and what our liability insurance covers. So anything else that's out there, no, our insurance does not cover it. But everything that I've presented to you tonight, and hopefully you agree on, is.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Yep.
Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
You can do aye.
That's Joe.
Nope.
Oh, aye, sorry. I move that we vote to authorize the Chair to sign the Recycling Dividends Program grant in the amount of $9,900.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead.
So the materials in your packet have my name all over it, which is unfortunate, because I had nothing to do with it. Everything to do with our DPW Director and his staff, and so thanks go to him and the staff for getting this grant again.
Speaking of grants, Larry?
I do. How's the money used?
I gave you the kudos, now you get to explain.
Yeah, thank you very much. Congratulations, Link, on getting a grant.
They actually, that's several thousand dollars in years past, we took a hit because our swap shop wasn't open. They have a points program. We usually, it's in the $12,000 to $13,000 range. This particular money is money that they actually give the town in advance, and then we are obligated to track it. The last thing that we purchased out of this was our portion of the stump grinder that we bought. I don't remember when now, four or five months ago.
So it's basically to our discretion, as long as we track it.
Well, that took some doing to get the stump grinder approved for that, because it wasn't conventional recycling. More, usually, we just purchased a roll-off container for the recycling center. That is more in line with what they like to see. However, they did sign off on the stump grinder, as it really saves your carbon footprint. You're not digging up the soil, digging up the things. And I sold that to them on that, and they acquiesced to that request.
Thank you, Link.
Thank you.
Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Update from the town administrator in regards to the tax liability working group.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, and for the benefit of the members of the Board and the public, I am working with various staff members to get a working group together. The Finance Director and I reviewed some materials last week with assessing department staff. We were able to work off the classification material that was presented last week to then further refine and get from our assessing database company, I always get it wrong, it's PK Associates, I believe, I always want to call it KP, to dive into more of those classified lands. So what we have is a list of potentially developable land. I have to slow down because when I've said that before, I've said developable. It's potentially developable land. And now the next step to say that these are some property owners, do they have something pending before the town? And so that's the effort that started last week. I'll be working with other staff members, such as John Idman. And the whole net effect of this on the direction of the chair is to be able to present to the entire board recommendations that you can establish as policies. So that as we get to this tax liability issue that was spoken of earlier tonight, and that the board has spoken of over the last several months, if not the last year, that we, the town, can have an effort to make sure this doesn't happen again in the future. That's my simple update, Mr. Chairman. I know you can speak better than I on this generally.
Nope, I think you did a great job. We've talked about this, we've talked about this many times. We talked about getting proposals from law firms, hiring a tax title examiner, which we don't have the money in the budget for. So this is an effort to put a package together that we can go to town meeting for. And it's an effort to identify how much money we have to add into the budget to get the tax title examiner, the lawyers that we need, how many properties we want to go after. But to really get the nuts and bolts of what we have to create as a policy and the number to bring to town meeting. It's not as easy as just hiring a tax title examiner and going out and looking at these properties and taking them. So we have, as Finance Committee identified tonight, if you dive into the report from the tax collector, at least $1.6 million of the money that we owe is related to owners unknown. And out of the $6.694 million, over $4 million of that is interest and fees. So our number isn't as daunting if you get rid of the interest and fees. Some of the properties, in the real estate and open space meeting the other day, they identified some that they owe 400% more than the land is worth. We need to clean this up, and we've talked about it. But in order for this to go on and on beyond this board, I believe we need a policy, and we need a funding source to make it actually happen. With that, I'd open it up to the board for discussion, and I'll start with Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To be clear, if we start clearing up the owners unknown, if somebody were to step forward and say that they had a fractional or a total interest in a property, they'd have to clear up the back taxes, wouldn't they, in order to be able to actually take control of the land again?
And the way I understand it is also they'd have to, any fees associated with us clearing up the land. So if we put a title examiner on it and a lawyer on it, those fees would get added to that as well if they come forward.
Yeah, just one of the pub-
They'd have to pay that fraction of that amount of money.
Just wanted the public to understand that. That's one good reason, especially with where we are right now, the potential to do outsized growth that we're not even planning on. It is a good idea to start thinking of taking those properties. Right now, it's a book transaction.
Mary?
No, I'm just glad to see we're doing that, it's a step in the right direction, thank you.
Julie?
Oh, it makes sense, and I mean, obviously, if people owe more on the fees, they'll be willing to not come back, so.
Larry?
No, I'm very happy we're moving forward. Question I still haven't, is how many years can we collect back taxes? Because we've had some different opinions on that in previous discussions, about there was a finite number of years that we could go back versus all of it. Because some of these, I think, you mentioned, Mike, will go back, you know, exaggerate, seems like centuries, but.
I believe, Larry, the answer really is if we have not been sending people tax bills, it's only two years.
I'd heard two years in the past, but I didn't know what the exact criteria was on that, and.
If I may, some of these properties we might go upside down on, and the town will own them. And some of them are only fractional pieces of land, small, that we could never do anything with.
Right.
But under the state law, we're going to continue to accrue taxes on those. So we really need to just clean them up and own what we're going to own.
I'm agreeing with all that, I just wanted to understand, we're getting all we can.
If we haven't been taxing them, Larry, we're not going back very far. But that would be to the owners unknown, and you know, this board, I believe the intent is for Joe to get us information, and hopefully in the near future, as to the different groups of property and how we might take them. I'm hoping we go to town meeting this year with a global eminent domain taking on all of the miscellaneous and fractional pieces of land, and maybe some other ones. So it's, there's a lot of properties, the list is pages and pages. And the owners known that are paying taxes is another issue. And I brought this up, and the working group will work on this. We have a sand pit out in East Harwich that's, I believe, over 50 acres of combined land. And that land's being leased, on occasion to construction companies, and will ultimately be sold. The town of Harwich is only collecting $3,000 in taxes a year on 50 acres. So we have to look at how we assess. And the assessing department has told me some of it is state law. Well, some of it might not be. It really is time that we start looking at these large tracts of land that people claim they-
And agree.
That may not have full title on this, and it's time for the town to make a decision on what's best for the entire town and stop sitting on all this land. Don?
$3,000 for that? This has a history more than just, this has a history more than just being leased for equipment to be put there. There's a lot of transfer stations on Cape Cod that were capped using sand that was excavated from that. There's been industrial activity going back for years of various sorts. To claim that it's just some sort of fallow undeveloped land is ludicrous.
I believe they call it mining.
Yeah, it's mining.
It's a sand pit.
The point really is for the working group and Joe to get people together, to get us real information so that we can create something for town meeting this year that makes sense. And for me, sooner rather than later. Any other questions?
Nope.
Joe, I think it's important to, and maybe not in the beginning, but to add somebody from real estate and open space as we start talking about potentially buildable land, developable land. When I talked to John Idman about that, he said the process is a little backwards, and the assessing department may tell somebody that they have developable land before it goes, before planning. And at least in my initial conversation with John, he thought it should be reversed. So I think that there's some policies and some things we might want to change. And that conversation relates to a piece of land up by Thompson's Field that the road just got put in on, and that perk test that was done on that. And that, there's no map and parcel number on that piece of land, yet there's a planned development and a cleared development there. But there is no map or parcel number. So John said the first action that we should be taking is identifying where every piece of land is and making sure there's a map and parcel number. So I think there's a lot of things to fix. Go ahead, Joe.
If I made the last point that's made, and as you've said, it's an easy fix that could be done by policy, but in the immediacy, it is something that I can direct staff, that it's prudent that that happened in the manner in which we just said, that if there is something that's going before planning, that we've had the conversation with assessors and vice versa. And then we can lead to the policy to codify that. But in the short term, for me, that's just better communication. So I can meet with staff on that to make sure that that's happening immediately.
And Joe, the more you dive into that, at least my statement, I hope the board supports it, I've heard we can do more and we should do more, but we're not doing more. So we need to do more.
So just a question on that, I mean, I don't understand how anything without a map and parcel has any activity because, and especially being on 39, I believe there was even a detail there. So somebody had to submit, or should have been submitting something.
The planning board has approved the development, but there's still no map and parcel number. And I will share with the board the email from, or I would ask administration, to share the email from John Idman back to Megan from the questions that I asked, and they're still diving into it. But there is no map and parcel number. John did review it and thinks that it is fine, but there still is no map and parcel number. And the detail was for the water department running the line down the road for the fiber optics to go across the street, not for that development.
Okay, that makes sense. Thanks.
Anything else?
Nope.
All set? Next up on our old business is updates from the town administrator. We all have a memo in the packet, but it relates to all of the properties that we've been speaking of for the last six months or so. 1 through 6, Five Bells Neck, 203 Bank Street, 0 Seth Whitefield Road, also known as Judah Eldridge, 77 Willow Street, Pleasant Lake Ave, also known as the Marsline Property, and 276 Queen Anne Road, the attempt at a pet cemetery. Five Bells Neck Road, Joe, if you don't mind, I'll start with this. Per the board's direction, I met with the people that responded to the RFP. We, Joe outlined what procurement laws were, and that $35,000 was the minimum that, under the procurement laws, the bid on that property was $1, and they pledged $20,000 of their own money to fix the roof on their, would be their building. So net to the town was $1 with a historic preservation on the building and a promise that they wouldn't come back to CPC for all the money to fix the building. The recommendation at the time from the town administrator was to reject the bid, that it didn't meet the law and the minimum amount due, but that the board could do what the board wanted to do. We chose at that time to have a meeting. Since that meeting, the respondents to the RFP have backed out, and they seem to be stuck at their $1 with them fixing the building. And at least my opinion is town meeting gave us authorization to sell the building, not give the building away. And I would not support accepting the RFP, and they are not willing to budge. And as a matter of fact, the letter they sent to the town was backing out of the RFP. Joe, anything you want to add?
Well, just that the town has heard from our provider of insurance on vacant buildings, so that's a subset that's not related to Maya, has informed us that if the town does not take certain measures, they will no longer insure it. So although it sounds somewhat counterintuitive, we do want to have insurance on that vacant building for minimal coverage and protection. But to do so, now that the potential buyers have backed out, I will be asking the board at a future meeting to rely upon the $50,000 that we got from capital to make some minimal repairs to the roof. And I think there was another repair that's required to make sure that no one can access the building. And that way, we can continue to insure it as the town figures out what we want to do next.
And just not to scare the public, $50,000 was appropriated, but to fix a three-foot hole in the roof so that it doesn't continue to rain inside won't cost $50,000, even under municipal bids.
Correct.
Pleasure to the board, start with Don.
I've been going to try to preserve this building since 1997. So I'm probably not the mainstream of everybody. We worked really hard at putting the DCPC together. I will take note that we lease the Montemoys Schools, the elementary school, for a dollar a year. The dollar doesn't bother me if they're taking full control. I mean, there are some times that there's addition by subtraction. If it's not a town asset, we don't have to take care of it, and it has a historic condition imposed upon it. I don't see anything different between that and the South Harwich Meeting House. I would surely love to preserve it. And I don't think, I didn't think that the offer was unreasonable in the first place, first of all. Second of all, wouldn't we have to reject this, I mean, forget about what we might want to do with it, wouldn't we have to reject all offers by vote of the board?
Turn to the procurement officer.
Not if the other party withdrew.
How did they withdraw from a bid?
They sent it in a letter. They weren't interested in paying anymore.
Yeah, but that's their offer, they didn't withdraw the dollar. They didn't withdraw the offer, they withdrew the negotiated higher offer.
My understanding was that they withdrew from the project.
I would love to run that by legal counsel, I don't see how you could reject something that they didn't offer.
Well, I think we could get to the same place by taking a vote to reject the offer, if that's the will of the board, whether we have to or not. So I think as we continue conversation tonight, we certainly could vote to reject the offer and move on. I personally.
The bottom line is I would, I'd accept it, so that's where I'm coming from.
Mary?
It's such a mess, but we did look at that as a potential for four apartments. Can we go back to that and put an RFP out to see if somebody would be willing to develop it and create four apartments? I've heard mixed bags, I guess there used to be a dry cleaning business either there or right nearby. I've heard the dry cleaning thing has resolved, and I've heard it has not. I don't know. I don't know if we could check that out, and if it is habitable, could we put some apartments in there?
We have gotten information that it is resolved.
It is resolved.
The last time we discussed whether we tore this building down or sold it, two or three years, three years ago.
It's been resolved.
It's been resolved. So the answer to your question is if we reject this, or they withdrew, we could go back out for another RFP. And this time, you know, the RFP process, where Joe can tell us where we're publishing this, and it's in a journal, I believe, somewhere, right? It's not.
Well, the minimum requirements is that we have to submit certain RFPs to the state to go into their statewide publication. And so that's the minimum way to broadcast it.
And in addition.
Future actions could be done in a different way.
And in addition, Mary, because it's a real estate transaction, we should pay the $100 or $200 to get it listed with MLS, so all of the realtors pick it up, so we get some real exposure. Julie?
Yeah, I mean, this has been on our plate for quite some time, and, you know, I agree, Don, in the sense that, you know, it falls, if you could preserve it like the old South Harwich Meeting House. But at the same token, that got done. And you may have more info on that than I do in terms of how long it took to get done, but this has been kicking around for quite some time, to the point where we said if anyone was interested in taking the building, even in moving it, because it, you know, it is a beautiful building, but the amount of money that we would have to put into it just to repair it, to insure it, plus the insurance. And the insurance is not a Lloyds of London, but something similar.
Yeah, it's extraordinary coverage, I think is what they call it in the industry.
Yeah, so we're going to spend all this money on insurance, and we need to make some repairs. And we still don't know if anyone's going to do anything beyond giving us a buck. So I think that's a little different than a dollar for what is now our cultural center, which, you know, is bringing in a couple hundred thousand, I think, at this point. So I struggle to say we're going to kick this down the road again, I think we should do something.
Larry?
Yeah, I'm on that side, actually, that we've been on this, we've been discussing this, seems like forever. And this is the offer that we have now that we'll at least take it off our books because I'd be reluctant to spend $50,000 or somewhat even less than that to keep it insured if we're just going to sit there and sit on it. I would, I would take the $1, but takes us off our roll and they do the roof, and move on with life, and let someone else take it over.
Larry, we could reject the $1 and put this back on the market without doing the historical renovation and limiting it to one group that's been involved. Make this a real estate transaction with a historical preservation on the outside of the building. It's real estate in Harwich on Cape Cod, it's going to sell for a lot more money. And town meeting did not tell us we could give the building away, and this is a giveaway.
The point I would argue with you on that is we've tried to keep, we tried to put the RFP out there as broad as possible so someone could take it as real estate rather than another group come in. The limitation we seem to have, we've gone through variations of this, and we keep broadening it each time, is still trying to keep this historical, historical building. And in my mind, that means they could, and I think even in their mind, they could keep the structure and replace everything inside. If we remove the historical aspect, as you're suggesting, you know, someone could knock it down as valuable land. But that's so far as now, but it was what we've been directed to by town meeting. And if we could sit on this for a time, I just don't want to drag on any longer.
Well, in town meeting, it was the preference of town meeting to keep it historical, not, that was not the motion. The motion was that we can sell that building. And we have not gone into MLS and tried to sell that as real estate. And I have to believe, you know, the small, the group, they did a great job of the DCPC. This does not sit in the DCPC, this is on the other side of the DCPC.
No, we're okay, that's not a factor, I agree with that, we're fine on that, that's been sailed for some time.
But that proposal came through with what may be, or what they may be able to get, not what they have. The only thing they pledged was $20,000 to fix the roof. And I think we do have to move on because this has been closed for 30 years.
I would take any action that moves us down the road and got us off our roll, even though it's for $1, we can sell better, but I don't want to sit on it any longer.
I would ask for a motion to reject the- I would ask for a motion to reject the proposal or the respondent to the RFP.
Your agenda topic for tonight is updates only. We didn't put notice on there for any votes.
So I'll bring this back next week. And, and my intention would be to get a, to get a motion to reject. If we don't, a motion to accept. One, one of the two, but you're right, Larry. Let's stop kicking this can down the road. It's been forever.
Do something. That's my point.
But I think the dirt's worth a lot more money than one dollar.
Could we clarify, Michael? I'm sure you're right. That the motion didn't, didn't specify historical aspect because I, I can look at that too and go back in the motion. Cause I, I remember that differently.
I'm sure staff can find it. Joe?
Yep, we'll certainly look into that to validate all those.
Mary?
My question went out of my head. It'll come back.
We can come back to it. We have five more to talk about. Joe, anything on this one that you want to talk about?
No, I've covered everything I needed to.
Okay, 203 Bank Street and Joe.
It's back.
Go ahead.
Now you knocked it out.
I thought we said that they had withdrawn their proposal. If they've withdrawn their proposal, why do we need to?
We will, we will reread the email. I can't find it in my email chain. If they have with, if they have withdrawn, then we do not have to take a motion. We can then just make a new motion.
To go forward.
To go forward.
Thank you.
203 Bank Street, Joe?
The quick update on that, as you'll see in the memo, is based on the earlier discussion with the board where I updated you that it's actually four parcels in and around 203 Bank Street. The directive that I took from the board's earlier discussion was to focus on the parcel that contains the building. And that's the just about, just under a quarter acre. So to do that, we need a new appraisal because we need to ascertain the value of that prop, part of the property to divine what we would be seeking for the RFP. The update is that we're trying to secure survey services.
And the reason we have to do that is because the current appraisals for the entire property.
Correct.
At four hundred and seventy thousand?
Uh, no, the current, the current appraisal for the four parcels is based on, we, we can derive that value from the assessor's database. But all four parcels are presently valued in total at five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
Therefore, if we go out for a bid on this and someone bids and the bid is a lot lower because it's a much smaller piece of this, that wouldn't be acceptable under procurement law.
The argument could be made that the town is not getting the true value out of the property. But if we, if the town through the board understands that the value resides in that, that single parcel that contains the building itself. Cause if you remember, the earlier discussion is there's a directive right now for the town to demolish the building. Do we wish to do that? The directive from the board was, no, not yet. Let's see what we can get for it. So it's prudent to have that survey, excuse me, that appraisal that talks about what that parcel and building could be worth. We expect it to be far lower than the five hundred and sixty-five thousand so that we could have a better sense of what could come in for proposals.
Thank you. Any movement on an appraiser, Joe? I mean, timeline, I guess is what I'm looking for.
So, yeah, the town is, is reaching out to several appraisers. Cause as you'll hear later on, there's also a need for appraisal services for the, the Pleasant Lake Avenue that came out of the town meeting discussion. Meaning the appraisal that we got from that, I think, came closer to a hundred and sixty thousand. And the town thinks that we may be able to get a more accurate appraisal on that. So we're trying to get somebody to do multiple appraisals for the town at different locations.
Go ahead, Julie.
So just based on my work, I know appraisers and engineers are crazy backlog. Talking probably at least ten to twelve weeks.
That's what we're finding as well.
You know, that's.
We're trying to use the good credit and weight of the town as a customer and you can see where that's getting us.
Well, as you talk about eminent domain takings for a pile of properties, I think that should carry some. So anyone that knows any appraisers, please have them contact our administrator.
Cause it really is bad.
Mary?
Yeah, I, I do have a question, Joe. So then, the other three parcels, what do we, what happens to, to their value then? Do we sell those separately or do, what, what happens to that?
No, if you recall the earlier discussion, the Director of Planning and Community Development said that the town could look at that as one parcel, but the value is derived from the central parcel.
No, explain that.
All be included. And so what could happen with it is that they could all be conveyed at once, but that the value is derived from the parcel that has the building.
So he's saying there's no value to the other three parcels?
Well, I think what he, I think what he presented to the board earlier this year.
I mean, how's, how's that, how's that true? I mean, usually when you buy property, you have the house, you still have, who use, who has use of that then? I'm lost.
The town could convey all four parcels at once through the RFP. I think what the director was saying.
But they'd only pay for the one parcel?
Say again?
They'd only then pay for the one parcel?
Correct.
So it's a way to, to put it out on bid at a lower price and it could be we sold the whole property at once?
Well, I think what the director was saying earlier is that there's, that the four parcels, that if you split it up, there's about one lot there if you tear down the building. So if we don't tear down the building, we're still looking at essentially what's one lot.
So there's no difference in value whether we look at those four parcels and one parcel is what you're saying?
No, I think there is a difference, but if we ask an appraiser to look at the.
But how do we get full value for the town if we're not charging for, if we're giving, basically, seems to me what you're saying is we're gonna give them four parcels for the price of one parcel.
They're not four buildable parcels now.
Right, they're wetlands.
They're wetlands.
So there's no value to those separately?
A much lower value is, is what I think.
I mean, it looks like we're being too cute here and trying to be sure it goes out for a lower price. And I'm, I just want to be sure we get full value for the, for the, the, the property in its entirety.
I don't disagree. I could bring it back for a board's further discussion on that.
Am I making sense? We're, we're selling one parcel, but we're gonna give them use of four parcels.
You are. My understanding was from the prior discussion with the board that it was decided that the building should not be torn down, that the town should focus on the parcel that contains the building as the prime source of the value of the land and go forward on that. I can rely upon the minutes from that meeting for the board to have a future discussion if you'd like. As been said before, I'm just trying to move the, the action forward on these parcels.
Julie, Larry will come back to you.
I think, I think if I recall correctly too, the, the reason we were looking for the value of that parcel holding the building was because the abutting properties are wetlands and there'll be buffer zones everywhere you go and measure back. You're gonna have, right? You're gonna have.
But those would be, excuse me, those would be still buffer zones whether, I mean, cause that's a separate.
They would be, but we don't have a survey of the lot to say, what is, how much buildable upland do you have? And we don't have the footprint of the law. We don't have all the information of the survey of the law. We only have the combined, we don't even have a survey, I believe. We just have the lots.
We have a current survey of where the wetlands are.
Correct.
Right, but, but we don't have a broken down by, yeah. And if you've got all those lots, you don't have the info on all the individual lots.
The original intent, Larry, when we first talked about this was tearing the building down.
No, I understand all.
Selling the four lots together.
Yeah, I understand all that. I understand the focus on the one lot. It's just it's a wetland, the area is wetland no matter how we do it.
Well, now the conversation, and I think the one, sorry for interrupting you, but now the conversation has gone since we have a town entity that's interested in restoring the old firehouse, the fire association, that we, the board, decided not to tear the building down and to go out for an RFP. So that they could respond, they could respond. Others may respond as the four lots.
And I understand all that. I just want to be sure we don't give, it wouldn't be fair to give them a particular break and lower the price if anyone else is interested in it because we took those out.
No, and I think if I'm reading it correctly, we're not doing that. What we're doing now is now, now we're selling an old dilapidated building and we're getting an appraisal of what that means with the old dilapidated building on there, correct?
And the use therein, correct.
And the use therein. So we had no appraisal of it with the building. We, we had the assumption we were tearing that down and we're gonna make it level and clean.
Well, my, my only hope is that going forward, we still don't, we still keep in mind that versus the property in its entirety to be sure we're getting full value. No matter if it's internally or outside, we hold that to the town.
The only, the only difference, Joe, would be remind me, the appraisal for the five hundred and change included the town spending the money in the article to do the mitigation on the hazardous material and demoing the building and making the lot flush, getting rid of everything.
Correct. So the, the original effort was to look at 203 Bank Street, which everyone knows to have the old Harbor Master Repair Shop and before that, the old Fire Station. And then when you look at that, there's four parcels in total that were available. So the presentation to this board at an earlier meeting was to say that there are four parcels available, that there is a, a building on it and what should be the next steps? Should there be the demolition as was contemplated? And so you were looking at the four parcels at that time. The town can rely upon the value of those parcels as determined by the present property cards of the assessor. But that's when you were talking about the four parcels, when the parcels wouldn't have the building, the demolition would have occurred. And instead, what I heard the board say at the earlier meeting was to focus on the parcel that has the building, do not destroy the building. So then the town needs to derive through an appraisal was what is that focal point worth? Because what the town needs to demonstrate to the, to the inspector general and auditors and everybody else is how did the town derive the value of that parcel? And the short answer would be we relied upon a professional survey, excuse me, professional appraisal rather than the property cards for all four. And the town has the right to do that. I would also argue that the town has the obligation to do that if we're focusing on one parcel.
And the, and the evaluation before was not based on an appraisal, it was based on assessment cards.
Of each of the parcels individually.
Some that aren't usable.
Yeah, I'm with you in all that. I just don't want to, if you bought, if you and I went out and bought a property that contained wetland, we'd still pay for that wetland even though it has a little value by itself. So I don't want to create an artificial, artificially low price by ignoring the wetlands. It was part of that property. It's my only point. Your appraisal, I agree with your appraisal. I, I'm not questioning what we've done. I just want to keep it balanced going forward.
I personally would just pick a price and then, and go out for an RFP. But, I mean, the middle school's still valued at twelve million dollars. So whatever the assessment card says is wrong.
Oh, to not be a person, a procurement administrator.
So you have to follow.
Heavy as the head.
So Joe, I think just the message to the appraiser is that there's four lots here. They're not totally usable. If we sell this one lot that's usable, we're obviously gonna give the surrounding, the surrounding pieces. So what's the appraisal on all?
And if I may, before the, so once the appraiser is under contract, I would come back before the board and say, this is how we are contemplating having the appraiser look at it. So there's further discussion at a public meeting and it puts everything out there for public view.
And timeline, I know I keep saying timeline, but I know we have two interested parties in the room tonight. Along with the chair of the finance committee that's also very interesting. What are we looking at?
So officially, I can't acknowledge the presence of, I cannot acknowledge the presence of any parties that may be interested because I have an obligation for the, to the town to derive the best value and price possible.
Thank you for reminding.
And so the short answer is as soon as we can get an appraiser on board, we've got that property. We've got the eminent domain property adjacent to Pleasant Lake Avenue. So as soon as we get them, we would undertake that immediately.
Okay.
I think your earlier statement, Mr. Chairman, to the general public was, if anybody knows a good appraiser to send their card in, is very much welcome at this point.
Okay, moving on to Seth Whitefield Road.
So as you can see in there, this one does require survey services. Similar situation where good luck trying to find these land-based professionals. But yet we're still trying to acquire that because as Katie Klein has indicated from KP Law, and this is an effort that stalled two years ago. Katie was able to pick it right up while, once the board directed me to get moving on that again. And really what it comes down to is their, their tax title examiner, after I think about eight or nine months of effort, has come back and said it's still too cloudy for them to come to any discernment and so they recommend survey. So we do have three names that were recommended by council and we're reaching out to them to see if they're available, how much and how soon.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
No.
My only comment on this, Joe, is time is definitely of the essence. We have CPC breathing down our neck because they gave an appropriation. This is one of those properties that goes up every year because of the tax and the fees and the interest associated with it. The appropriation is probably already not enough. So we need to move on these. Seventy-seven Willow Street.
So I apologize, that's a typo on the, on the agenda. It's actually seventy Willow Street. And on this one here, I had updated the board. And prior to developing the RFP, met with staff and it's the recommendation of our Director of Planning and Community Development, of which one I completely endorse, that it's better for the town to have full, clean titles of the property. Because all the efforts that were done over the last twenty or so years, none of them achieved clean title for the town. And so before we go out to RFP, it's my recommendation that I continue working with our planner and other parties so that the town can get clean title. The way to do that is eminent domain taking.
Do we have to go back to town meeting for an eminent domain taking?
We, we do because as I said, the prior efforts of the town, none of them have a direct authorization to go that route. However, it's been suggested to me by, by smarter folks, that I'm inclined to agree, that if the town didn't have clean title and we went to sell this, any future purchaser is gonna demand that the town demonstrate clean title. So we may as well do it upfront rather than wait for them to tell us to do it.
Can this be on the agenda for next week for a vote on eminent domain taking and article for town meeting?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Pleasant Lake Ave. Marsaline Property.
So this ties back to the other one, meaning we're looking to get a different appraiser to take a look at it, to see in fact that the appraisal that was presented to town meeting is in fact that high or if it's more accurate, as the town believes. It should be a lower appraisal. So again, same situation as before, just trying to get the appraiser on staff or under contract, I should say.
Thank you. So the message to the board is, we've talked about this for four months and we're still not anywhere further. Because we can't find appraisers and, and people to do the work. So call everyone you know. Two seventy-six Queen Anne Road.
So actually, this is one that I snuck in there if I could, meaning we've been talking about surplus properties. And I will only refer to this as two seventy-six Queen Anne Road. I was not present. I had no knowledge of this prior. I don't know any other names.
Pet Sematary.
However, some would, some would call it that. A wonderful novel and movie by the same name by Stephen King has a lot of analogies. However, and, and I can identify, it's not a mystery, but the water, wastewater department was contemplating if they would need to rely upon two seventy-six Queen Anne, if they had to move their location. They had a discussion at an open meeting and they determined that they do not see a need or a use. So given that that was the last group out there, cause it has been offered to town departments, it is now generally understood to be surplus, cause there is no municipal use presently. However, I do not believe that the board through town meeting has an explicit directive of town meeting that you may dispose of the land by sale. So that's the next piece that we're looking at. If we don't have that, of course, I'll create an article for the next town meeting that authorizes the board to dispose of the land by sale as authorized by town meeting.
Thank you. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The last time we did anything about disposing a property to put it back on the tax rolls was the Stonewood Products area. We've got a pitiful amount of commercial, commercially zoned property in this town compared to other towns where, where the ratables are actually supporting other activities for the town. I would love to see that go to somebody who's actually going to employ people and pay taxes. I mean, that's, that's the industrial zone. That's what it's supposed to be.
Mary?
Yeah, what, what he said. Love that.
Julie?
So I thought back when it was the other project.
Crematorium.
Yeah, oh my God, let's not even talk about that.
And no to the public. We're not talking about that again.
Was that, some of this land or a decent portion was not buildable. Is that accurate?
No.
I don't believe so.
It was all buildable.
I don't know.
I think it was all buildable.
I thought there was a certain amount that was not buildable.
And they were gonna be grave sites.
It's just a rectangle.
No, that's why they were going to be grave sites because you couldn't.
No. Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure.
Do we have a site plan on that?
She had maxed that out with grave sites everywhere. So no.
Yeah, but grave sites wouldn't, wouldn't be the same as having it be buildable. That's what I'm saying. Yeah, I think we need to look at that.
Okay. As far as I know, it's upland and there was never any setbacks for any reason.
Yeah, we just, we just were unable to get it through town meeting to sell it.
No, I know. I know that. I just mean, I thought there was something with the lot. I just mean, I thought there was something with the law.
I would love to put, I'm for putting this by skin and a warrant article to sell it, it's surplus property.
Put that on next meeting's agenda, Joe, for discussion and possible vote?
Money.
Please.
Tax money.
And then, Mr. Chairman, members, if I could very quickly, you'll see that in my memo, there's also an update. Attorney Klein, again, the Katie Klein from KP Law, she has in fact provided a draft deed document, I left a deed off there in the memo, it's going to bother me, for the board to consider next week, meaning you may recall, I think there were six parcels, and so we have at least information where next week, the board could vote to convey five of those six parcels. The sixth one is the one that has, I think, some, the, the vote of town meeting to make some restrictions on it. Council's still trying to vet what the net effect of that would be before the conveyance can go forward. But I should be able to have something before the board next Monday night if you want to vote to convey a certain number of those lands to the trust.
I do.
Say again?
Just for the public certification, what's the sixth property?
Well, that's the one I was getting confused on. It's one of the Depot Road, I think.
One with the Vernal Pools out in East Harwich.
Thank you.
That depot.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So, so, Joe, that can be on the agenda for next week.
We urge you to do something with System Road because that was supposed to be next part, next land up.
What do you mean? On the agenda next week?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we're going to do them all. Make your pitch. Old Business B, update, discussion, possible vote on 2022 Community Preservation Committee application, beautify Harwich Center. Joe?
I am beseeching, begging, and pleading to the board that you allow me to rescind that application for the 2023 annual town meeting vote, excuse me, the 2022 for fiscal year 2023. I have met with, tried to meet with stakeholders, had a very low turnout on that, have worked with CPC and Historic District and tried to refine it to an area adjacent or around to Exchange Park, but that is a park and that is the domain presently of the Recreation and Youth Commission. I had a very good conversation with the chair of that committee, but they do not contemplate anything presently. I will tell you that the board and the town can accomplish things relative to Harwich Center with things that are being contemplated in the capital plan, so there will still be activity and movement related to beautifying Harwich Center. The original effort, though, to bring lanterns and planters into the center will not work because we do not have the infrastructure in place for the lanterns.
Can I get a motion to rescind?
Move to res... Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contracts?
Thank you.
Do you want a motion on that?
Sure.
I move that we vote to approve a contract with Motorola Solutions for $177,490 for the purchase of portable radios for the police and fire departments.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, one thing on that.
Sure, can.
Jim, Chief Dave Gilmet, Harwich Police. I just wanted to send a huge thank you to Chief Dave LeBlanc and Deputy Chief Thornton for shepherding that program for the radios. That's actually all our radios. I think, have they come before you for the, their grant?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so it was, it was beautiful work. I didn't have anything to do with it, and to thank my Deputy Chief Kevin Konstantin also. But it's going to be a great, great asset to have the new radios, and this is, as, as you know, I think, coming because the state is mandating an upgrade from analog to digital. So they thankfully provided most of the funding, and it's, it's saving the town quite a bit of money. And then obviously, Chief LeBlanc getting the other grant for the fire radios is, is a huge boon for the town too. So I just wanted to thank him and Deputy Chief Thornton and Deputy Chief Konstantin.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone want to change their vote?
Seth, Joe? No, just to state, based on what Chief Gilmet said, so the public may be looking at the agenda which has the $177,000 price tag, but to what Chief Gilmet was just saying, the total funding required of the town after reimbursement is merely $26,527.11. So the board needs to appropriate and approve the full amount, but to the chief's comments, far, far less than that because of the efforts of staff.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Go ahead, Mary.
Ready? I move that we vote to approve the agreement for professional engineering service for comprehensive wastewater management plan revisions by GHD for $229 million.
Thousand.
Thousand, thousand.
That's a lot of money. I'll suck it, the revised number. Thank God John Torrey left.
You'd have to resuscitate him.
Who seconded that?
The lower number.
$229,000.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.